He did have a disqualifying conviction. Under our ordinance, it wouldn't allow him to have a vehicle immobilization license. I notified legal and the clerk's office of the denial. I even reached out to the applicant as an extra step to meet with him one-on-one at the police department to explain to him why I was going to deny it, and he failed to show for the meeting. The applicant has had two other employees apply for vehicle mobilization licenses, and I've approved both of them. They've been just fine. This particular conviction, the applicant will have to wait until February of 2020 before he can apply again. And just to kind of review, you know, these applicants for these vehicle mobilization licenses, they were invited to the table with us to help craft this ordinance. Mr. Nuno and I believe it was Alan Sparehawk with Deep Six. So they're aware of the ordinance. They were at the table, they came to counsel. They know what's in this ordinance. They understand it. So there shouldn't be any surprises. So I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Lieutenant Colliani?
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Lieutenant Colliani, the letter that we received from the appellate indicated that there were charges that had been dropped or dismissed. In your expertise, it's not about charges that have been dropped or dismissed, but other charges that have resulted in a conviction that have not been removed.
He has a conviction that I have received through the triple I. Shows a conviction.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Neri.
May I be helpful? Lieutenant Colliani can correct me if I'm in error, but I would say there are occasions that the records that we receive are in error. And they can, again, it's not an infallible system. The general response to the public, and my experience has been, is that if they can go and get proof of the error, they can show the conviction was withheld, it was dismissed. I mean, they can go get proof to show that the record that we received is in error. And I know in my office, when that's happened, we have routinely told people, "Go get it and show it," and we can do that. I don't know if lieutenants had the similar experience, but I wouldn't say there's never an error. It is rare, but there are ways to remedy that if that is the case.
Thank you. Any, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does Mr. Nuno want to make comment?
Well, it was nice to see you all again.
You'll state your name and address.
Nathan Nuno. Sorry about that, I forgot about that.
That's all right.
Nathan Nuno, 9136 West Brogan Drive, Boise. So like I said, it was nice to see you all again. Unfortunately, I knew my license would be denied. I knew this because my experience with Meridian P D, since I started working here in Meridian, has not been very good at all. I've had quite a bit of run-ins with them, and being the owner of the company, I feel that there was, there would be some malicious payback for things I've done. The conviction that...
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
If you want to keep your testimony focused to your appeal, this isn't the time nor the place to hear your characterizations of our law enforcement department. So if you want to speak to your letter, I'm happy to hear that, but I'm not going to allow this body to hear wild claims about our law enforcement department, okay?
Well, it's my personal experience, and this is my public hearing, that I'm being embarrassed about something that's been dismissed. So I feel that I do have the right to bring up everything so you guys understand why it was denied, how I, why I feel denied.
Well, I would add that it would be good to stay with the facts and things that you can prove.
Well, fact is, there is a recording that a Meridian police officer was saying that your views and Mayor Tammy's views aren't in line with the culture of Meridian, which the city does have position, possession of, that I provided them. I've been told by Meridian P D that even after the ordinance passed by an officer Young, that they still weren't going to enforce it, but if we did something wrong, they were going to. So to my point is, my conviction was dismissed. I do have proof of that, which I got from Ada County Clerk's Office, which is also on the Idaho repository. Clearly states it was dismissed. It was dismissed in, I believe it was April. I have proof of that. It's...
Do you have that with you?
Yes, I do.
You want to hand it to the clerk, and he can get copies for...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Nuno, are you talking about a withheld judgment?
No, no. Under 192604 Idaho State Code, a conviction can be, you can apply, it's like an expungement, but it doesn't expunge your record completely, it still shows an arrest record. But it changes the guilty verdict to a dismissal, which according to the judge and my attorneys said that that is no longer a conviction. But yet, it would still show I was arrested for it. But at the very end of my list, it does state that it is a dismissal.
You want to get that information to our clerk?
So yeah, like I was saying, I knew this was going to happen. I mean, the mental anguish that this has caused me has been extremely bad. Two of my other employees were approved, one quit, and one's actually trying to stay alive right now. So they have not been able to use their license in the city of Meridian, and I have not either because of this. So therefore, I have, since the first, or actually the fourth of the month that this actually became an ordinance, we've missed 29 call-ins for people in tenant spaces at our properties here. I haven't been able to patrol them, so who knows how many violations we missed then. And I'm on the verge of losing three properties because of this. So this has been a financial burden on me too because of this denial that, you know, should not have been a denial.
Your employee has the permit, so why could your employee not respond?
One quit, and the other one is unable to work. He's on the verge of, I mean, he's trying to stay alive right now. He's extremely sick.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So the one that was, the other one that quit, he actually quit, quit before the ordinance even came into effect. I stand for any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
We have to wait, or...
Mr. Cavanagh.
I know that we're waiting for the clerk to give us some information. We heard testimony from Lieutenant Colliani that he had a meeting scheduled with you to present this information.
Yes, I did contact him, and I was unable to make that. And so I tried to reschedule that, and he said no, and he just wrote me a long email.
Madam Mayor, I don't know where counsel is on this. If there's evidence that there's an error on the city's part, I think that's worthy of looking into it. This just, sometimes it's the council chambers is not the opportune place for us to have that information presented to us. We're not experts. Lieutenant Colliani or Law Enforcement Department or Legal Department aren't the experts. I'm supportive of continuing this for a week and allow the appellate to meet with law enforcement and determine if this letter is valid or not. I'm not the expert on that, and I wouldn't claim to be. If Mr. Nuno is able to have a license granted, he should have a license granted, but if he's not, that, our law enforcement can make that determination based on this letter that he's provided.
Well, we can give Mr. Neri an opportunity to take a look at it and see if there's more time needed. I don't know what kind of review you need to make, but...
Madam Mayor, thank you. Members of the council, again, I don't know what it is, so I guess we'll have to wait. But if it's something the lieutenant and I can review, I mean, tomorrow, we would issue the license tomorrow. So I mean, it is not we would wait a week. I mean, we'll review it as soon as possible, and if it is valid, and it does show that he has a withheld judgment that's been ultimately dismissed, and it does no longer violate our ordinance, that's fine. Again, we've had that circumstance before, and that's how we've handled it.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Question then about process for Mr. Neri. If counsel were to determine to deny the appeal today, but tomorrow the appellate meets with you and provides ample information, are you then able to grant him a license, but, or do you be prohibited from doing that because we've denied his appeal?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, I would recommend you continue it for that, so there's no question that we're, it's still pending, and then we can review it and make that determination, and if we can do that by tomorrow, I have no issue with that.
Okay.
And it's on the very last page, just so you know, it's the very last thing on the law. But any delay in my license more is a financial loss for me and the potential to lose more properties.
Counsel, what I would suggest is maybe we get the presentation from VRT, and then we can ask Mr. Neri for his opinion on whether to continue this or not.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move to item 5A, which is a presentation from Valley Regional Transit. Good evening, thank you for joining us, or good afternoon, I should say.
Yeah, either one. It's close enough. Brian Parker, Valley Regional Transit, Associate Planner, 700 Northeast Second Street. Just here today giving you guys an update on our process towards potentially delivering a fixed route service in Meridian 2020. Just as a quick overview of what I'll be discussing, some of the feedback we got from the public, as well as some private sector support we've been receiving, and an update on the low and no emissions grant for electric vehicles to run the service, and then the schedule and the next steps. For our public input, we divided it up into two different surveys. We sent one out, just as general public, through social media, earned media, word-of-mouth, different things like that. It was more focused on general support, gauging interest, how to make throughout the most useful we can. And then we had a different one that we sent out to major employers within the city to get their feedback and gauge interest in partnerships. First, I'm going to focus on the public survey. It was open from May 12th to the 16th of this month, 16 questions long, got 260 responses. The majority of those, of the respondents don't currently use transit. We asked a couple of questions for demographic information, where they live. Since we were focusing this survey on Meridian, it's not surprising that it was focused around Meridian. We got majority of responses from the two zip codes in Meridian. Then we asked where they worked. Pretty large amount of responses for people working in Meridian as well, and then more in downtown Boise. What, few questions we asked, how important is public transportation to the future of Meridian? The average score on that was 86. Nearly half the population of the response said that it was at least a 90 to 100 on a scale of 0 to 100. And then similar question with a little bit of implied financial stake to it of, how much of a budget priority should this be? Got a similar answer, a little bit lower average score, but still about half the people rated at a 90 or above. And then we also asked how important connections would be, so to the east, to the Boise, and then west at Nampa. Nampa was marginally important. Boise, there was significant importance on being able to make that connection, continue on into Boise. So we'll be working with the city to make sure, City of Boise, to make sure those connections can happen. A few, the open-ended comments showed a lot of support for transit in Meridian. People are very excited about it. If you want more, or the handouts that I think got passed around to you guys, yep, of the complete survey results. And then, so the large employers, it was similar timing, got similar amount of feedback, about 220 results, few less. Nobody in that survey currently uses transit, but about 1/8 had in previous jobs.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I mean, a question about that large employer survey.
Yeah.
Who are you, are you serving leaders of that, of those large employers, or is it employees who work for these large employers?
It was primarily employees. We worked with the Community Development Department here to get a list of contacts at the large employers, that we then asked them to pass it along to their employees.
So, Madam Mayor, just for clarification, this isn't a president or a CEO or a board member that's commenting. This is somebody that works at any level in this organization.
Since we already knew what their work zip code, or where they worked was, we only asked where their home zip code was. The takeaway of this map is that it is all over the place, so a complete solution for employer transit in Meridian is going to take more than just the one route, but that's a start. We asked if they consider it to be an employee benefit to have public transit, and over half the people said that it was. And then, three-quarters of the people said that it would be a worthwhile thing for their employer to do, to partner with the city. There was a little less enthusiasm in the open-ended responses from the large employer survey. There was a little more concern about what if their kid is sick, what if they need to go home in the middle of the day, the general safety and comfort of taking transit versus being in a single-passenger vehicle, which are all things that we can work around, but it's good to note them and to be aware. And then we've been working with the private sector through the Chamber of Commerce and Meridian Development Corporation, both of which have agreed to submit letters of support. And we've got soft commitments through Meridian Development Corporation for up to $65,000 in capital infrastructure in downtown for stops and shelters and things like that. We submitted our grant application for eight electric buses. Two of those would be expansion vehicles that would serve the city. Mid-May, we should be getting a response back in the next month or two. Then it's a year and a half or so of lead time from there to actually get the buses delivered and rolling on the street. Should we get denied the grant? We will still be pursuing buses. We will be pursuing them through other capital funds, whether those are competitive or formula funds. And we'd still be in need of match funds, so, but we can make any funding dedication contingent on federal match. So we are finalizing the budget now with you guys and other cities that are interested in expanding the transit. Then, once we've got a hard budget to work with, we will be finalizing routing concepts, taking those into our board for approval, be establishing stop locations where shelters and ADA pads and things like that need to be. Then we should be able to roll late 2020, early 2021. That's what we're planning on. So summarize, the public was generally supportive of expanding transit service in Meridian. There is also significant interest from major employers and the private sector. We're continuing to pursue federal grants to maximize your local match. And just as a side, we are also working currently, as in today, with City of Boise to expand their transit service by another half million dollars or so. With City of Eagle, we have a meeting after this to discuss expanding transit there. Just, everybody in Ada County at least is pretty excited about moving forward and expanding service. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Counsel, questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor. Brian, how was the public portion of the survey disseminated?
We worked with your community engagement staff through City of Meridian's Facebook, our Facebook next door. We had two or three news stories through the local news channels, some newspaper. Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh.
Brian, you mentioned everybody in Ada County, so I think counsel knows I'm on the VRT board. I know from the board perspective, there were some concerns and conversation about the city of Star not participating in the system. Has their participation changed or is planned to change?
Yes, they're, they were unsatisfied with the Route 44 that was just the one route, or one trip in, one trip out sort of service. They would like to see it more robust, a little more frequent service throughout the day. I think they're kind of waiting for Eagle's service to come online and then work toward expanding pass there. Take one step at a time.
Madam Mayor, follow up. Brian, did you guys connect on these same type of surveys amongst other municipalities within the county as well?
Yes, we had a very similar design for Eagle and then...
I know one more if I can, thank you. Right, responses then similar across Ada County than what we saw in Meridian, or was there any data that stood out in Meridian versus anywhere else in the region?
What really stood out was how similar support was.
That was my search. I appreciate it.
Zero to 100 scale questions were within two or three points on all the surveys.
Yeah, just, I guess, a question is to, was a question asked, and I haven't had time to look at what the questions were, but on if people were willing to pay for the service? And if so, how?
Madam Mayor, by people, do you mean riders or...
The people that would ride it, yes.
Yes.
And the employers that would encourage it among their employees.
Yes, so we are working through the process of increasing our fares, which should be going to affect in October, so a single ride would be up from a dollar to a dollar fifty. We've gotten better feedback than you would expect for telling people they're going to have to pay more money. And generally speaking, the request we get is not for cheaper service, it's for more service. So the public generally seems willing to pay fares to ride the bus. And then, as we said, we've been kind of softly feeling out private sector interest. Haven't quite gotten to a dollar number yet, but we're gaining support.
So on the ridership cost, what is the percentage of the operational cost does that cover?
Currently, with the dollar single-trip fare, it's about 8% of our operating cost is covered by fares. We're hoping that goes up with our fare increase. Our target is 18 to 20%.
Any other questions from counsel?
I don't have any questions.
Hey.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer.
A quick math, which is never a good idea. So if it's only covering 8% of your expenses, does that mean that you're subsidizing about $12.50 now per ride?
Oh, that is... So if the bus is full, the $1.50 will pay for the service. If the bus is empty, then it's more heavily subsidized. So the peak hour trips are going to be less subsidized, the off-peak is going to be more.
Madam Mayor, but on average, I, it was probably a couple of years ago that I asked where we were at, and last I'd heard it was about $7 on average per ride is what taxpayers are having to subsidize.
Not sure what our per-ride cost is, but I can give you that information.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. We appreciate you coming and sharing the information, the survey results, and joining us today. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Brian?
Okay, I'll turn this back to item 4A, and Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We reviewed the record Mr. Nuno provided to you. That isn't the actual record that he needed, it's a different one, so it's not that one. He had a different one in his folder that he did show Lieutenant Colliani and I, that also is incomplete, and it doesn't correlate directly to the FBI record we have. What I told him was the same thing I'd said to all of you, was you can go to the court and get the actual record to show specifically what happened in the disposition of your case, because all he provided and what you have in front of you is essentially a court record of proceedings. And the one that he provided us might be complete if he could provide that. And so I, we advised him to do that. He, I guess, decided if he would just go ahead and leave. Now, but I would ask if you would continue it a week, well, actually, two weeks, I guess, till your next meeting, so he can have the opportunity to go get that. And we told him, again, if you can get that, lieutenant can review it, we can review it, and we can issue a license soon if we have that.
So he doesn't necessarily need counsel action if he can provide the proof?
Yes.
That's correct.
That's correct. If he brings it, Bill and I will review it, and if it's an actual court document that shows what he's claiming, then I can approve the license on the spot, and we can move forward. It doesn't need any action from the council unless you want to hear it.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
From a procedural standpoint, should we continue it to our, can we move to deny and put it on our consent agenda two weeks out, and if he comes in and gets it cleared up, then it goes away? I'm trying to figure out how we can close this out while still giving Mr. Nuno the opportunity to provide this information. This is a little cart before the horse. It feels like nothing that staff did, but I think had Mr. Nuno engaged with you, Mr. Colliani, for every time we wouldn't have this...
That's what the meeting was for.
So, Madam Member, members of the council, I would suggest simply continuing it for two weeks. If in two weeks he has provided it within that time period, we would suggest at that point you can either deny it or he can withdraw it.
Great. Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I move that we approve item 4A, the appeal of denial of vehicle immobilization license by Nathan Nuno to July 9th.
Second. The motion is second to continue this item to July 9th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes? Thank you. And thank you for taking a look at it. Item 6A is under Department Reports. We do have a presentation on what the mayor and council compensation committee is recommending. Thank you, Josh, for joining us and for your volunteer service on this committee.
Thank you, thank you. I'm Josh Everts, 303 East State Avenue, Old Town Meridian, 83642. Thank you, guys, for having me here today. I want to thank the rest of the commission who nominated me to do this review for you guys. I guess the slings and arrows come this way.
Were you in town when they did that?
What's that, the slings and arrows? No, I could have been in Serbia, I could have been in London, France, Belgium. For those of you who follow me on social media, it's been horrendous, and I haven't slept in days, so if I'm chippy, then I apologize in advance. Committee worked really hard on this. This was my first time serving on this commission, or this committee, to kind of do this kind of work. It was really fascinating. I actually took the time. Mr. Neri was great in providing me all the discussions that had happened historically on this topic, so it was fun to go through all that stuff in order to put this together today. Committee worked very hard. I thought that the discussions were vigorous. There were certainly lots of different opinions, but I think what we came to was a lot of unanimity in terms of what we're going to recommend to you today. So what I'd like to walk through is sort of the makeup of our committee. We're going to look at a little bit of market data, some historic observations. This is what we spent a lot of our time on, because I think that's what frames our recommendation going forward. We do have a specific recommendation for the mayor, specific recommendation for city council, and then we just have some bullet points, just some analysis, that we wanted to offer some thoughts to you guys, some observations, and then open it up for any kind of questions that you'd have for me. So this is our committee. A lot of the, in fact, I think everybody on here had served in some capacity historically, so there was lots of experience. It was good to have a lot of the old, some new faces in there to nugget through this. Staff, Bill and Crystal, were both fantastic in terms of writing support, data calls and stuff like that, for those of us who live in Excel and enjoy that kind of work, so thank you to all of them. Some market data. One of the really beautiful, beautiful things is that Meridian Press decided to do an article on this on June 6th, so while I'd love to take credit for this tremendous graphic here that is not mine, it's Meridian Press, copyright them. But they did some analysis for us. They actually went out, did some interviews, I believe, with you guys, looked at the market. And this is just a graph, it's just kind of showing this is not anything that we're beholden to, but it is... beholden to, but it is just some metrics and some information that's worthwhile as we look at this. What we see from a mayor's standpoint is that we're sitting at number two, kind of in the valley in terms of what we're compensating our mayor. And then, our annual salary of our city council member, we're sitting at, it looks like six there. And yet, as would be expected with city council members, because it's not a job, and the ranges, if you throw Boise out somewhere between that fourteen, four, and ten, that there's, you know, that's not way, way out of line. Those things are relatively close, even though I think that as we get to our recommendations, there's some room for improvement. I did appreciate, and I brought a copy of the article, we didn't include it in the notes, but I thought I'd share some observations from you guys, because we took those to heart. We read through this article and we spent some time. Councilman Palmer talked about the reality is a position requires a level of work commensurate with far more than ten thousand a year, and that a salary of twelve to twelve-five would be more appropriate. There were other comments in here that we took to heart, that Councilman Cavanagh said that this is not a job. He doesn't want to see compensation be at a level where this is somebody's single source of income, we still are public servants, and that we need to keep that in mind. So, these were all things that we took to heart and ingested as we came to some recommendations. So, some observations on that. So, as I went back, I went through all the data for the last twenty years, because that's what I like to do. So, since two thousand, city of Meridian leadership have chosen to raise salaries four times for city council and eleven times for the mayor. Just facts. Since two thousand, city council compensation has gone from six thousand to ten thousand. Since in that same period, mayoral compensation has gone from slightly over twenty to just under ninety-one thousand. Two big observations came out of this as I dove a little bit deeper, we as a committee dove deeper in terms of an observation, and that we see that the reluctance to increase city council compensation at the same rates that we saw the mayor being increased was really done due to two factors. One was the demographics of city council. As we looked back and we looked back at some of the notes and comments people like Keith Byrd were making, these were people that weren't relying on any income, that were absolutely public servants, and didn't want to see any additional compensation coming to them. What we've seen, and it was even in the article, is that as we have new city council members and we're trying to attract new talent and new leaders, elected leaders, that this could be something because of the workload, because of the knowledge that's coming with the job that you guys are performing right now in terms of land use issues. We're just dealing with a much different environment today than we were twenty years ago, and we're asking you guys to do more research. We're also living in an environment where things like social media is making you guys by default more active, more visible. People are seeing those commentaries, people are watching Councilman Cavanagh's Facebook Live things every week and getting prepared for this. So, we're just seeing a heightened sense of workload that's happening as we take on this role, which is exciting, because you guys are doing really important things, and as you make decisions on these things that affect over a hundred thousand people, we want you doing those things, and we want to make sure that for future city council members and mayors, that we're doing the appropriate things to compensate you for that work. So, those are just some observations we made. So, for the mayoral recommendation, I guess at the top line, the mayor's salary is in line with current market rates. We felt like it was right in there, we didn't see anything grossly way off, but we do feel that as we look at market adjustments that are happening to the broader city employee base, that we recommend an eighteen-hundred-and-twenty-dollar market adjustment increase. This is in line with what we're doing right now for city employees. And we feel that that should be the same in FY twenty-one as well. So, that would take the mayoral salary to ninety-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars over the next two years. We thought that was appropriate. You're gonna see this recommendation for city council as well, but we had a long discussion about providing a change to our actual city statutes, that when we do market rate adjustments to leave city council and the mayor out of those adjustments that get made to all city employees, we feel that that's inappropriate, that we feel like that should be an automatic thing, that we put that in statute, that when we agree as a city to provide a one, a one and a half, a two percent increase to all employees of the city because of what's happening in our markets, why would we not be doing that same thing for our elected folks as well that are working on our behalf? So, that is part of our mayoral recommendation. For city council, we feel that we're trailing current market rates. It was pretty apparent to us that there are some deltas there, and that we need to start taking that on. I guess before I get to this, I'm gonna give, I'm taking my hat off as representative of everybody, and I'm gonna just speak to me. My recommendations were much higher than this, but the feeling and the sentiment from the rest of my colleagues was, well, they simply are not gonna vote in favor of a bigger raise, something that you're suggesting. And I said, well, I don't want to go in there and get shut down. I said, so I want to pick something that's appropriate. I said, but we have to, we have to start making incremental adjustments to this, that the longer we wait, the bigger this problem becomes. So, now I'm putting back my team hat. So, our recommendation is a five-hundred-and-fifty-dollar increase in twenty twenty and a three-hundred-and-seventy-dollar increase in twenty twenty-one. City council presidents should also continue to receive the additional ten percent addition to the service that they're doing in that role. We felt that those were incremental, that would get us to just almost to eleven thousand dollars, which is still not where I believe it needs to be long-term, but, you know, the old adage that the way you eat an elephant is one bite at a time, so I think that making those incremental steps is important. Same recommendation for city council members, that changing city ordinance to provide city council any market adjustment provided to general city employees in the future would be appropriate. We just think that that would be a great statutory thing to get in there, and it also provides just a mechanism to kind of keep things in line, that we won't, you know, have these kind of situations where things are way, way out of balance as our market grows and increases. So, some analysis, some kind of final thoughts here. Compensation for city council members has been a byproduct of demographics of the council, we believe. To ensure quality and broad participation in the future, this council must begin approving increases in compensation. It just has to happen. We just can't keep kicking the can down the road for whatever reasons. Even the proposed increases, it was, we dealt in percentages, and we felt that percentages might scare people off, like when we put a big five percent in there, it's like, wow, you know, city employees aren't even getting five percent, so we decided to make it dollars. So, you can see that even though it's five percent that we're talking about for city council, the real dollars there is, you know, five hundred bucks. So, we're talking about, if you add all this up for city council, we're talking about a thirty-three-hundred-dollar decision that will probably be debated for twenty minutes and might get shot down, but it's, but we're not, but we're talking about thirty-three-hundred dollars here, and so we thought it'd be important to put dollars to this. But even in doing that, by twenty twenty-one, we're still gonna be ranking behind Boise, Starr, Eagle, and Nampa. And this does not account for any increases that those cities make to their city council in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. We have already been getting inquiries, I believe, Mr. Nary, from other cities as to what we're gonna be doing this year. We do have some data, again, from the article, that the city of Eagle made a move last year to increase from ninety-nine-hundred to twelve thousand, so they did make a full two-thousand-dollar jump in their compensation to city council. Garden City increased it by twelve hundred dollars in a year. And then, we see that Boise made about a four-thousand-dollar jump. They were twenty-four, and they're going to twenty-eight next year. So, there are some very, very significant jumps that are happening, which means our delta just gets bigger, bigger, and bigger if we keep kicking that down the road. So, again, my comment, only way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time. Failure to approve these recommended wage increases only hurts future leaders of our city and causes a further gap between us and neighboring communities. And I just think that it's also gonna set up this environment where, you know, as you ask us to come back two years from now and try to exhort you guys to do the right thing, our gap is gonna be even bigger, and it's gonna be a more awkward conversation. So, we felt that we picked an amount that was appropriate, and we felt that it was in line with things that we're doing kind of across the board, and that we would encourage you to unanimously support this, because we worked really hard and we think it's the right thing. So, with that, I guess I'll take any questions that you all might have.
Thank you, Josh, for your presentation and for your continued service, yes. Council, questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Josh, you and the committee, thanks for your work. I think most of this body knows, it's always an issue that I wrestle with. I'm curious, so you piqued my interest.
Yeah.
What was the conversation amongst the committee about what that number needs to be to attract that talent base that is choosing not to run now because they view the low amount of compensation as a hurdle?
Yeah, you know, the only data point that we really had was actually Councilman Palmer's comments inside the article. That was the only real tangible bit of data where there was, that there was concern about the amount of time that was being spent and the fact that as an individual was valuing their time, time with their family, just the number didn't work. And regardless of Councilman Palmer's and I's position on different things, he's a guy that faithfully serves, and I don't like losing people that want to serve their community because the number actually becomes prohibitive. So, that's the only kind of discussion that we really had in terms of, you know, attracting talent, because I just don't think we could get to anything that would be, you know, kind of supportable in this analysis.
Madam Mayor, well, taking your committee hat off for a minute?
Yeah.
What was your number? I'm just curious. You did a great job of kind of pulling me in and picking my interest.
Yeah, no, 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 I appreciate that. That's a great question. So, I really felt that for us to not get to a number two or a number three position in terms of the, in terms of the valley, it just, it just, not that I'm trying to compare ourselves to other cities.
Right.
But it just seems way out of line that these cities have already gotten to a twelve-thousand, five-hundred number, you know, and we're going from ten to ten-five, like in real dollars. I just felt like, you know, the number got thrown out by Councilman Palmer, that, you know, it'd be more like a twelve-thousand, twelve-five, and that was kind of where it's like, this is a gentleman who's done the job, he's spent the hours, he's taken time away from his family. If he feels like the number is twelve thousand or twelve-five, like I'm all in, like, let's go. And yet, as we talked about that as a committee, Clint and those more experienced people are like, yeah, don't do that. Like, if we suggest that, you're gonna get laughed off and walked off. And yet, at some point, it's very, very, very difficult the further we get behind, behind, behind. So, I guess, Councilman Cavanagh, if you would like to recommend twelve, twelve-five and as an increase, since it's your show, I would be super supportive of that. Now, putting my group hat back on.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Milam?
I know I don't have any questions, Josh, but thank you for, really appreciated that presentation. Basically, you've taken everything that I've said in the last two meetings, that we've discussed this, but did it a little bit more eloquently and added some charts.
Yeah.
And I really appreciated it, because it's exactly what I've been saying for years. And year after year, we hear the presentation of the committee, the recommendation, and say, thanks for your time, but no, thanks. We're not spending an extra five hundred dollars a year. So, I really appreciate it. All of the work that your whole committee did and the time that you put in to get, to been on those committees, and you don't want to feel like you wasted your time either.
You're very welcome, and what I will tell you is, there were moments in both of our meetings where we were like, so if they reject this little small amount that we're recommending, like, at what point do you just disband us? Because we're really not certain, like, if we're doing all this work and we're pitching the lowest possible thing that we think you guys would accept, then what the hell are we doing? Like, just pick a small amount and save us the time, I'd rather be golfing. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burke?
Oh, sorry.
I like, thank you, Josh, I appreciate your presentation, I appreciate the committee's recommendation and the time spent. I like Councilwoman Milam, I've sat on this committee before, I think twice, once or twice, and both times we recommended, you know, modest raises in compensation. But now, as I sit in the seat, it's just, it's just an awkward conversation to have. It's not natural. I mean, I come from the private sector, and when I want to have a conversation with a subcontractor of mine, whether, you know, we meet at, you know, somewhere and we have a conversation, I certainly don't, you know, gather the rest of my employees together and we all in favor, raise your hand, and we give ourselves, you know, a raise. I mean, that's just, that's just, it's an awkward, it's an awkward conversation to have, especially with the, you know, neighboring cities, you know, thinking that it's honorable not to take it. I would disagree. I, and I respect their opinion, but the problem we're having is that I almost feel like these positions are becoming, I'm not gonna say privileged by any means, but a certain, only a certain type of person can run for city council now. You have to make a certain amount of money, you have to be, have a certain job, and I just, and that bothers me, because I feel like if someone wants to run and is a good leader that can bring something to the table, who can make a difference and has that servant's heart, that person should be able to run for city council and not, not be denied that because they can't afford it, or they don't have the time, et cetera. And so, I would almost be, I really love, and I got in a quasi arguing with my wife about this a couple of days ago, because we were chit-chatting about it, but I really liked the idea of this ordinance, changing the, so we don't have this conversation every one or two years, that we don't have to give ourselves a raise, that we're not getting paid more as a percentage than city staff, that it just goes in tow and in line with what we're doing as a city. And I think that makes it so that it's less awkward, it's more efficient, and you guys don't have to get together every two years and spend a lot of time debating whether or not we should get a raise or how much that raise is. You come in and, and we feel as elected officials that we have to do the honorable thing, because we don't want to be in the news, and we don't want to be hit with, you know, daggers in social media saying that the city council members in the city of Meridian want a huge raise. You know, we don't want that. We certainly don't want to be a part of that discussion. So, that would, that would be my, I love the idea of an ordinance, and I wholeheartedly support not a raise for myself, because I don't need the money. I've never spent a dime of the money that I receive, but for people who run for city council in the future, that they, that this, you just have, so it's fair, so, and that it's equitable. So, that would be, that would be my thoughts.
Councilman Burke, one thing that I want to just clarify, so the city does two kinds of raises. So, there's the merit-based programs, and then there's the, you know, just kind of living, I call them COLAs, cost of living adjustments and stuff like that. So, market race adjustments. So, you know, what we're suggesting is that the market race adjustments are the things that you guys would be benefiting from, because that really is, that's what it's there for as a market rate adjustment. I don't want to abandon this committee, because I believe that we need to, we still have gaps, and I think it's still appropriate to do analysis as a committee as to what our elected officials, because we had some vigorous debates about even these dollars and like, are we, are we, are we putting too much in there? Like, we don't want to, like, one of the sentiments that was shared was, we don't want to give people raises, and then what happens, you know, if we don't like the job that we're doing? And we said, well, that's why we have elections. Like, if we don't like the job they're doing, they get booted. So, I said, but what we need to make sure is that as a committee, we're looking at compensation and making sure that we're getting good value and that we're providing appropriate value for the investment we're asking them to make. And what I would offer to you guys as city council and as a mayor, is that the workload from twenty years ago has gone way, way up. I think the responsibility and the issues that you're dealing with have gone way, way up, and it's appropriate to make an adjustment. So, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Cavanagh?
To one of Councilman Burke's points, there had been some conversation about if this group should meet every two years or every four years. The committee have any discussion about that and come to any conclusion?
If you guys aren't gonna approve any of these things, then make it four. Like, just save us the time, like, I'd be fine with that, but like, I think two years is very appropriate, so.
I appreciate that.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Milam?
I'd like to hear more about the merit program.
Yeah.
Well, if we're getting a market rate, should we also get merit when we just show up to everything and do it?
I gotta tell you.
Acceptability job?
I threw out an idea.
Wow, who's gonna rate you?
Yeah, I threw out an idea the day one of this, because the way, the way we work in the software world is as you get accreditations and as you get different certificates of expertise, you get additional compensation. So, one of the things that I offered, like, day one, when I was naive and stupid, was, you know, why don't we look at some of these very, very important topics like land use? Like, is there some knowledge, online learning stuff that a city council member could do on land use to improve the value that they're bringing as a city council member? And then, can we provide some kind of bonus dollars that are additional for getting these very specified things? Everybody laughed at me and said, like, look at Josh, we're not even gonna get three percent approved, so let's like kick that to the curb and just try to do, like, that really, I don't want to understate this, that really was the spirit of this, is we're gonna go in there, Gretchen tried to do it two years ago, and she got the slings and arrows, so we're gonna send you up there, Josh, because you're likable and you have a beard and smell like cigars, so we'll see if they kick you off. So, that's, I mean, that's, like, I don't know, we laughed, we had a good time, but that's really has been the spirit of this. I love the idea of providing additional compensation for performance or things, but I just think it gets in the category of too difficult.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, but a great observation, because it was mine as well. Supports my worldview.
Mine too.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, and Josh, since you kind of live in the world of millennials.
Mm-hmm.
Was there a discussion regarding, because we've got, you know, future generations that we need to look at, and I think it's time, money, the whole package.
Yeah, certainly. No, we, we definitely talked about the fact that we already see a younger group of people serving as city council members. All you have to do is kind of look at the pictures out in the hallway of, you know, or past city councils, and I feel like we're, we're, we're getting some younger people. I appreciate younger people coming out and wanting to be public servants. I do think that when we ask people to commit the kind of time that we're asking here, it, it's a factor. It was a factor for Ty, and I think it's going to be a factor for other younger people that are starting families, to Councilman Burton's comment. If we don't start dealing this, with this, we are dealing, or we are creating the environment, we're incenting the environment, that there's a certain category of person
Right.
that can do this job. It's going to be somebody who's got lots of free time, that's got lots of disposable income, retired, and so therefore, that's the, that's the views and the, and the representation that you're going to sort of incent on something like this. Where if we do want younger ideas, and we do want those, those eyes and those perspectives that us old people don't have, then, then I think we need to incent that and create some, you know, some, some compensation that's more in line with, with the market for this kind of work. I was doing napkin math of, like, what is this really, like, I saw the 15 to 20 hours is a pretty consistent number, that people were sharing in terms of time spent. So I'll let you guys determine whether that's accurate or not. I, I got to imagine at times, I, I think you put in the article, Councilman Cavanagh noted that, out of the gate, it was 40 hours, you know, because you're all in. That's the way I would be. So, but at 15 hours, we're talking about 33% of a work week, and if you take an average salary, you know, of a city employee, we worked it out, and it would be, the compensation would be more like 17,000. So, so we're basically taking compensation for your time that should be around 17,000, and again, we're going to grind over 10,500. So, so I, I, I think that's the kind of analysis that, that we need to be looking at in terms of, you know, what we're really asking of you guys as, as public servants. And I don't want to lose the servant part of it.
Right.
Like, I'm an HPC guy, like, I don't get paid for, you know, maintaining history for Meridian, but, but the level of responsibility and visibility into what I do as an HPC servant is much, much different than what you guys are dealing with. I would never run for this. Like, like, I, I just, it's more work, and it has nothing to do with compensation, it's just, I, I would, I've, I've been to the meetings that go till 1:00 in the morning, and I, I like to sleep, so.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Josh, can you share with the council the conversations around certain amount at year one, an additional amount at year two, as opposed to just one increased recommendation?
Yeah, what it really came down to is, we didn't think you'd approve it. Like, I mean, we, we could have put a bigger number up here, and we just really believed as a council, it was very, I mean, Mr. Neri was in there, I mean, there were just nods from those old-school guys, Clinton, everybody, they were like, nope, not going, because I asked the question, I'm like, what is the dollar amount that these guys will agree to? And it was, you know, we agreed with this number. I think that, you know, I, one of the things I believe, and remind me of, of this, Mr. Neri, I think at one point, we did talk about that if city council, based on this discussion, wanted us to go back and meet one more time and, and come up with a, you know, if they really were understanding that we would meet one more time and come back with something, was it, didn't we talk about something like that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the committee did talk, one of the conversations that Josh was kind of talking about was whether the committee felt comfortable in suggesting maybe some sort of truing up of what they feel the council positions should be paid, and then taking the same analysis or the same idea of future and keeping up with it in the future, would that be a direction the council would, would want to consider. The numbers that, that Josh has talked about, and there are two other members of the committee that are here as well, were all numbers the, the committee was comfortable with. They weren't comfortable that the council would be supportive of that, and they were, they wanted to bring something they felt you could support, but they were willing to go back and have another conversation and bring you a number they felt was truly what they value city council positions should be paid for the work that is being required and expected by our public, with, again, a, a plan for the future, to make sure it stays true to that and doesn't get falling lagged behind again. So that really was a thought, if that's a direction the council wanted to go. Did I, I think I said that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's accurate. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Other question, I guess, maybe a comment. I appreciate your feedback, Josh and Mr. Neri. Sounds like the council has created quite a reputation that you guys are bringing forth only what you think we'll say yes to, as opposed to what you truly want to recommend. And I know I've definitely contributed to that reputation, and, and we often now find ourselves in, in quite a predicament. I, I don't know how the rest of this body feels, but we're going to have a committee that brings a recommendation. I, I want a recommendation that the committee's suggesting, not one that they think we'll say yes to. I don't know how the rest of the body feels. I say that as someone who has struggled on this issue, I think, three times since I've been elected. Some of the feedback from your presentation that I've heard from your committee members and from our public about, it's not about the six of us, it's
Right.
about the people that are in this seat
Completely.
10 years from now, 20 years from now. And I don't, there's plenty of things that 20 years from now, they can say, boy, that Councilman Cavanagh, he made a big mistake, but I don't want this one to be one of them. So I'm also not prepared, honestly, to make a decision tonight, receiving all this information. So I'm supportive of asking the committee to meet an additional time, to come back with the recommendation that the committee truly wants to make. Also recognizing that you've, you've brought some numbers that you think we would say yes to, but to, to really allow you to, to do the, the intent of this body, which is to, to come up with a recommendation for us, process the information that's been presented to us today, and maybe render a decision at a later point in time.
Madam Mayor. I agree with Mr. Cavanagh wholeheartedly. You know, and I'm, I'm okay with taking the unpopular view, as, as a leader, as, as a decision-maker, I, you know, every once in a while, you got to, you know, and I have no problem taking heat if that's what's going to come my direction, but I, I think that this is a really important decision that we need to make for future councils. And going off into the weeds just a little bit, if I, if I may, we're about ready to have an election here in November. There's potentially going to be three open seats in this body. And as of right now, only three people have publicly said they're going to run for city council. To me, that's scary. To me, that's concerning. So I, I, it, it tells me that people just aren't taking it seriously, and tells me that there's, that, that good people out there who have servants' hearts, who want to make a difference, just aren't able to, you know, because they can't justify it. And that is, that, that's not the Meridian way, certainly not how we treat our city staff. So I would support meeting one more time, and, and I'm, there's not a person that's sitting up here that would say, you know, that we do it for the money. So.
Hey, Joe.
Hey, Joe. We don't, it's just not the case. But we, we, we live in a wonderful city, a city that's growing. So I, I would, I would, and, and to, and to keep that level of service, to keep, to keep, to keep the train going, I, I feel like we, we're, we're, we're not there right now, and, and we need to be there. And I would, I would, I would support one more meeting, coming back with a real number, not an extravagant number, but a real number, that makes sense.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Josh and your committee, thank you so much for the work that you put in, and I agree, I would like to, I hate to ask you, but to see you meet again and come back with a number that is where the committee believes that we should be. It's really hard, sitting up here, to think about saying yes to more money for us, but when you put it in perspective, the total amount, and the fact that we are about to an election, which, if it could make the difference, whether somebody can afford a sitter or something like that, through the year, that somebody that's got a passion to run and to serve the city, because, I mean, it isn't a full-time job, you still have to have that passion to serve the city, but it might enable them to make that yes and go ahead and run. So I would like to see you meet again and, and bring forth the number that the committee feels is where we should be.
And afford a sitter that can go to midnight. Ms. Mylum.
Madam Mayor, good luck with that. Hasn't worked so well for me. Josh, and maybe you said it, and I know you said that the, you came forward with a number that you thought that we would maybe possibly not kick you out the door for. Was that, was, was, was most of the committee comfortable with that number, or did everybody think that was too low? I want to take your recommendation, whether it's this recommendation, or if it's asking you to meet again, but I don't want to ask you to meet again if you're just kicking tires and you're like, well, we already kind of feel pretty good about this, for the most part, so.
Yeah. Councilwoman Mylum.
Asking you to change your
Yeah, no, 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 not at all. No, no, what I'll, what I will tell you is, this group, like, this response, and I wasn't here two years ago, so I wasn't a part of it, but the spirit in the room was definitely, Mr. Neri, that don't aim high, like, don't make the recommendation it's too big, because it's going to be brutal, it's going to be ugly, you know, prepare yourself, it's an election year, and it's like, I think the group would be excited to meet one more time with this kind of guidance, because there was no pushback. I, I would say universally, when we were talking about numbers that I was suggesting, and looking at everything and trying to get us more in line with what's happening, and the workload that we're frankly, again, it's not a comparison thing, it's the responsibility and the commitment that we're asking of you guys. Everybody was pretty much unanimous, like, yeah, boy, that, that, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, don't offer it, because it's not going to happen. Like, like, this probably won't get approved. So, yes, I think we'd be honored to go back and meet one more time. Bill's a great host, and, and come back to you guys with a recommendation.
Okay. Counsel, I would entertain a motion then.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I want to make sure I make this correct. I would move that we send recommendation back to the committee, for them to have one additional meeting, return on, Madam Mayor, Mr. Clerk, is there a proposed date, July the 9th?
July 9th.
Work for you?
Mm-hmm.
To, to come back to the July 9th work session with a final recommendation.
Second.
A motion in second to continue item 6A to July 9th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you to the two other committee members that are here, too. Okay, item 6B is under our Parks Commission, and we have Hillary here.
I thought I said Parks. What am I going to do? Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I stand before you with a net zero budget amendment for the traffic box wraps in the urban renewal area. We already have an agreement with MDC for these boxes, and City Council has also already approved the artist agreements as well. We typically try to get all of the boxes wrapped and then send MDC their invoices, so it's a neater transaction, but these estimates included in your budget amendment form are what we're expecting to see in our invoices. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Hillary. Counsel, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve the net zero budget amendment for contributions to traffic box wraps with the urban renewal area.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve item 6B. Mr. Clerk, will you call?
Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, just as usual, we're, MDC is riddled with debt, I can't bring myself to, to vote for them to spend money on art.
Okay, any other comments? Sorry I didn't ask. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you, Hillary.
Item 6C is under our Fire Department.
Madam Mayor, counsel, wow.
Whoa.
I came right out at this time, didn't I? Good evening. This is a budget amendment request for $800,000. This is a repayment to the Meridian Rural Fire Protection District for the build of Station 5. Little history on this, when I came in about nine and a half years ago, we had been collecting impact fees for the repayment of Station 5, $1.4 million owed to build stations back then, right? With that cost. So we were collecting impact fees for it, I got together with then CFO Stacy Keltzerman, as well as Mr. Neri, tried to find the agreement that was written up as part of that, couldn't find a written agreement, but everybody did agree, including the, the rural commissioners, that was the agreement when Station 5 was constructed. We've been collecting impact fees, in 2013, we repaid $600,000 of the $1.4 million owed. We've been continuing to collect impact fees, the timing is right, we wanted to make sure we got through Station 6 with enough funds, the district was willing to, to work with us on that. We have enough funds, have been working with Mr. Neri as well as Todd, they both agree this is the right time to do it. We need to have this done prior to the next fiscal year, when the new impact fee schedule goes into effect. So that's the reason for the timing, the reason it wasn't included in the FY19 budget originally. Everybody agreed to let Station 6 play out, make sure we have the funds, we do. We will be coming to you in two weeks with the cost share agreement, that's an annual thing that we do, the MOU amendment. The district cost share is going to be 9% for FY20, finance has built that into the budget for the budget presentation. Within that, we will also have the language of agreement of the repayment of the remaining $800,000, as well as the quick claim deed that will go from the district to the city on that station. So with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions? CNN, Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the budget amendment to the amount of $800,000 for the Meridian for Rural Fire District for Station Number 5.
Second.
I have a motion in second to approve item 6C, a budget amendment. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I'm excited to see the end of what essentially is paying off debt, the city. And no matter what, it all goes to the service of our citizens, because money eventually will be spent on them.
Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
All ayes. Item 6D is under our Police Department. Kendall, welcome.
Hi, Kendall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I stand before you to request approval of a net zero budget amendment for the Partnership for Success Law Enforcement, Law Enforcement Grant that was awarded to us from Idaho Office of Drug Policy, in the amount of $13,137. This grant will go towards three expenses.